The September 5th, 2018 meeting of Windsor Plant and Commission will now come to order. Will the Secretary please call the roll?
Chairman Gale Schick.
Present.
Doug Dennison.
Present.
Kelly Hall here. Victor Tallon.
Present.
Jerry Bushelman.
Present.
Daniel Foreman.
Present.
Travis Neves.
Present.
Town Board Liaison David Sislawski.
Present.
Thank you, Amanda. First item on the agenda is a review of the agenda itself by the Commission for any changes or additions of new business to the agenda.
Mr. Chair, I move we accept the agenda as written. Second.
Been moved by Commissioner Tallon, seconded by Commissioner Bushelman that we accept the agenda as presented. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed will vote no. And motion carries unanimously. Next item is public invited to be heard. If there is anyone in the audience who has an item that they wish to present to the Commission that is not on tonight's agenda, now is the time to do so. And if you do have an item, if you come to the podium, give us your name and address, and you will have a three-minute time limit for your little piece. Seeing there be none, we'll keep moving along. Next item is under the consent calendar, and this evening's consent calendar consists of the approval of the minutes of the August 1st, 2018 meeting.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the meeting minutes of August 1st.
Second. Been moved by Commissioner Tallon, seconded by Commissioner Neves that we approve the minutes as presented. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed will vote no. Motion carries unanimously. Moving into the board action items, we will close our regular meeting, open up a public hearing for a conditional use grant for oil and gas facility, South Gate subdivision, fourth filing, lot four.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry if I may.
David.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, I noticed there's a number of public quasi-judicial hearing items on the agenda this evening. With respect to each of those, I'd like to have entered into the record the following disclosure, that I am here solely as a liaison from the town board to the planning commission, and I am not participating in these hearings, and I'm only here observing, and I will not be taking into account making any comment or participating in those hearings. Should the matters that are being heard by the Commission today come to the board, I will make my decision on the board levels based solely on the information presented during the public hearing at the relevant town board meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, David. Paul, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Any questions? This is a request for a conditional use grant to allow an oil and gas facility that is a non-producing facility on lots three and four in the South Gate subdivision. The proposed facility includes an office building, warehouse, and outdoor storage yard. The municipal code does not allow for outdoor storage in the general commercial zone district, which this property falls within. However, as a oil and gas facility, as defined by the municipal code, outdoor storage would be allowed, and that definition is included in the packet materials. The subject lots are located northwest of Weld County Road 17 and South Gate Drive. The application depicts outdoor storage on approximately 4.7 acres on lot four, and approximately 6.5 acres on lot three, and lot three being noted as potential future expansion. The office and warehouse buildings are depicted on the southern portion of lot four. So the office building adjacent to County Road 14 with the warehouse to the north, which would serve as screening for a portion of the outdoor storage. An eight-foot tall precast concrete screen is proposed for the remainder of the County Road 17 frontage north of the warehouse, and an eight-foot screen fence is proposed for the remainder of the storage facility. The tallest items intended to be stored within the yard are 22 feet, so there is the potential for some visibility of those items from the right away. Included in the packet are a list of materials intended to be stored there. Here's an example of the precast concrete wall and the fencing material. I do want to note that the images are to include chain link with slats, which are not currently allowed by code, so one of the conditions would be, should this be approved, that's recommended by staff, is that the applicant provide fencing in accordance with municipal code. So the items to be stored, the environmental control device is the largest at around 22 feet in height, meter building, pipe racks, forklift, motor control centers, gator equipment, tree ups, transformers, variable frequency drive, spill response trailer, O2 building, and they also had some camper-type facilities that would be stored there but not occupied. And I believe that summarizes all the items intended to be stored there. A neighborhood meeting would typically be required with an oil and gas conditional use grant, however, in this case, since there's no extraction associated with it, there was no neighborhood meeting required. The requirements for a conditional use grant for oil and gas are listed in the packet materials and in the PowerPoint. The application does appear to be in compliance with that code section. The application is also in conformance with the comprehensive plan, chapter 5D Commercial and Industrial Areas Framework Plan. Staff recommends the planning commission forward to town board a recommendation of approval of the conditional use grant with eight conditions. The, I do want to note that there's kind of red line additions to these conditions that were modified after the original publication of the packet materials to clarify the intent of some of these items. So if you looked at the packet prior to this afternoon, you would have seen the older conditions there. So those eight conditions are as follows. Number one, CUG approval is for outdoor storage as an accessory use to the proposed oil and gas office building and warehouse. Any other outdoor storage shall be subject to the municipal code requirements. Outdoor storage shall be limited to approximately 4.7 acres on lot four and approximately 6.5 acres on lot three. A subdivision modifying the property lines between lot three and four is anticipated. The CUG and all conditions shall apply to the current lots and any subsequent lots created. Screening of outdoor storage shall be provided as indicated on the application materials in compliance with the municipal code. Outdoor storage shall be limited to equipment directly related to drilling and operation of oil wells, gas wells, or injection wells. No equipment taller than 30 feet shall be stored within the outdoor storage yard. Landscaping shall be provided as required in accordance with the town's landscape standards through the site plan review process, and campers and recreational vehicles may be stored on-site, but it may not be occupied. So as referenced in condition seven, a site plan would be required for construction of this site, and the conditional use is really just allowing the outdoor storage use. There is a letter of public comment included in your packets as well. We do want to note that, and the applicants are present and have a presentation for you, unless there's any immediate questions for staff.
Okay. Thanks, Paul. The applicant has some information he wants to present. I take it? We can do that now?
Hi, good evening. Chair, Plant and Commission Martin Lynn, 1625 Pelican Lakes Point. The site plan in front of you here shows the dark is the actual structure. The storage that we're talking about tonight for the CUG is the area where the hand is following. We have visited with Cozy Cow Dairy to the north here and have hopefully mitigated concerns that he would have about storage along this fence, and the occupant of the building has agreed to move anything that would make any noise as far as loading and unloading over into this area. Other than that, it's a pretty simple, straightforward site plan. It is along Route 17, and as we'll see in the application, it's extremely attractive building, entrance to Windsor. It's got incredible mountain views up there, and it's going to be a great amenity. This building will have upwards of 300 employees that will have Windsor addresses. It's pretty exciting to have them pick our community. They've been great to work with for architectural design, and kind of fulfills the intent of the Iron Mountain-South Gate area that's been kind of stagnant for a decade due to the collapse of the auto industry and the recession. Kind of a self-explanatory submittal. It's very simple, and I'm happy to answer questions.
Since this is the public hearing portion of the process, is there anybody in the audience who has any comments or questions pertaining to this? Yes, sir. If you could come to the podium, give us your name and address, and you will have a three-minute time limit to give us your information. There is a red, green, yellow light indicator on the podium there. When you get to the, it is working, isn't it? When you get to the yellow light showing, you will have 30 seconds at that time of your three minutes.
Wendell Bradley, 608 Meadow Drive. The application for the Lynn's storage facility begins with two completely unsubstantiated claims. The facility supposedly will provide for 300 new jobs, and it supposedly is already in the plans of some major oil operator. Both claims must be rejected by this board as self-serving and hearsay, because they don't even name the oil company, and they don't provide any evidence. It is highly unlikely that there's any need for this kind of storage. Drilling for product for oil is simply not economic in Windsor's area. Government officials are at risk for the cost of cleaning up after the industry. Shale oil development is a rapidly failing industry due to its unfavorable economics, its negative climate effects, and its inferiority to solar electricity. The applicant's proposal leaves the impression that the storage is only for new clean fracking equipment. Even if this were the case, the facility approval should still be rejected, simply because it is an economically and ecologically bad type of development. The application as written would allow equipment storage that almost certainly would be radioactive. Well, piping scale, used pipes can be radium radioactive at levels 100,000 times above any regulatory standard. Storage could lead to dangerously and virtually permanent radioactivity. Decay products and fallouts, for example, scale out of pipes. The areas water table could become polluted, and it would, could ruin the use of any water wells in the nearby dairy farm. Radon gas could migrate into nearby buildings. The whole place could become polluted, and since the half-lives of some of these things are in thousands of years, it would be a permanent kind of pollution. The site could be just become a dumping ground for radioactive pipes. The pretext of a quasi-judicial hearing is also something I'm concerned with. Applicants get virtually unlimited time, but public rejoinders get only three minutes. And then after our three minutes, the applicant gets to come back and spend however much time they want over re-buddying whatever I would say, for example. Further oil development threatens residents' health and safety with known net positive trade-offs. And you should have a copy of my Lynn's storage proposal.
Yes, we do. Thank you for your time. Anyone else in the audience have any comments?
Good evening. Les Hardisty, 5630 Road 55, Torrington, Wyoming. My wife and I do indeed own the Cozy Cow Dairy, which is adjacent to, excuse me, grandkids give me their code, adjacent to and directly north of the proposed site. I've worked with the planning staff, had several questions for them. They've done a very nice job of sending me the information that I requested. Still didn't have all of my questions answered, so I did contact Martin Lynn, and he has certainly eased, not only eased, but given me some really good vibes about this project. So, again, being totally along the fence of the proposed project, I probably have the most to gain or lose because of this project of any adjacent landowners, and I do not see any reason for me to object to this, and in fact, I would support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Les. Any other comments?
Would close the public hearing?
Before we close the public hearing, I want to see if we have any comments, questions from the planning commission?
I do have one question for staff, Paul. Could the, I don't have the conditions in front of me, but I think it's the first condition that talks about it's only approved for oil and gas storage. In the future, if that building and the storage is not used by an oil and gas-related company, would a future occupant then have to come back to the town for approval for some other use?
Yeah, it's an excellent question. So the way it was originally worded, we felt it, and the applicant also felt it, it gave the impression of that, the reworded condition, the intent is that any outdoor storage not related to the oil and gas would simply need to comply with the municipal code, outdoor storage requirements in place at that time.
Jerry?
I have one question. Do you have a statement in there about they're allowed to park RVs and stuff there? Is there any limitation on this becoming an RV storage area?
The approvals for the oil and gas storage, they would have to seek approval for RV storage.
Even though you have that clause that they can store RVs and trailers on the storage area?
Yeah, if it became just RV storage, it would not be in compliance with the approved CUG.
But in the future, somebody couldn't come in and do both of them on it?
They could propose that. I believe it requires heavy industrial zoning, which is not what this property is owned.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the commission?
So this is, is this mostly new equipment, or is it old, not old, but used equipment? So it's coming back out of oil fields?
I'd ask the applicant to get into that.
I did have that prepared as that was part of Mr. Bradley's concerns. This operation is for new equipment only. This is equipment that'll be assembled and tested at this facility and then taken to the field. This is not a used equipment, lay-down yard, or a place for, they actually own a yard in Windsor Heavy Industrial for that type of stuff.
Down for your lead, Mr. Lynn. Okay, back to the storage stuff so we can clarify that for the, basically that's the rigs that go out in the field, the trailers and stuff like that.
Right, the RVs?
Yeah.
Yeah, the purpose for an RV would be for security or what have you when they go to the field. If they weren't in the field, that's what those RVs would be.
Any other comments, questions?
Is it part of the conditional use that it will only be new equipment, or it just?
I don't think it's part of that, but that's the purpose of this 30,000-square-foot shop is to assemble new valving and mirror boxes and stuff, so that's what it is. The applicant is, the operator of the facility has told us that it's only going to be new equipment.
But if he changes his mind and makes used stuff, does he have to come back before the commission?
Sure. The way it's, the way the conditions are laid out for you, they'd be allowed to utilize it for new or old equipment unless you wanted to add a condition to that effect.
Victor, go ahead.
So, but you mentioned that there's already a place for heavy industrial somewhere in Windsor where the used equipment is?
Correct.
Can you just?
East on Eastman Park Drive.
Okay.
Yep, right north of the old Kodak facility. They have a heavy industrial. They were before you guys about a year ago creating a heavy industrial zoning for it.
Okay, cool.
And this, just, I'm not quite sure what the covert nest was, but this is extraction oil and gas, and they're one of the very top producers in Colorado, very stable, and it's a very, very good three-hander job, so Mr. Bradley's concerns were, I don't know where those came from, but the application's actually XOG.
Victor, you have one?
No, I was just going to say, you know, even if it was new equipment or they reverted back to bringing some old equipment in and rebuilding it, I don't see where that would be a difference or problem, you know, as I'm looking at, because it's basically an equipment storage and assembly place. That's what I'm looking at, so.
If I could give a little bit of piece to that, oil and gas industry's changed a lot, and there's very, very few small operators anymore, and you'll never find an operator in today's world put a used valve or a used piece of equipment on a. It's the liability of that and the risk of that. They'd have to go back and x-ray it and do all of those things, so those days that we all kind of grew up with oil and gas, and some guy would start syndicating a little deal, and he'd get a rig and go put some pipe in the ground, and, I mean, we were all around it, but those days are gone. There's nobody accepting that liability anymore, so this facility is state-of-the-art, and it's designed for lots of, in fact, one of the big rooms in the office. I'll be brief, because I might have some stuff up. This entire room right here, that's dedicated to safety seminars, safety conferences, everything. It's just a giant, the industry's changed, and this is a state-of-the-art facility for that industry.
So, Mr. Chair, we have Mr. Lynn, the podium is, does Mr. Lynn want to have his slideshow included in the record or just for your reference this evening?
Your pleasure.
I'd include it in the documents just for that. We have everything that was presented, so we'll put that in there. Any other comments, questions from the commission? Okay, we have a motion on the floor to cut, close the public hearing. Second. Been moved by Commissioner Tallon, seconded by Commissioner Dennison, that will close the public hearing. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed will vote no. And motion carries unanimously. We'll reconvene our regular meeting, move on to the next agenda item, which is a recommendation of the town board for the conditional use grant for oil and gas facility that we just heard. Anything further, Paul?
No, sir.
All right, entertain a motion for, we already had comments, so. No other questions? Questions, comments?
Questions about the hearing, comments in the deliberation.
Okay. Any other comments? Chairman? Yes, Jerry?
I think with Martin Lynn's confirmation, it's all going to be new equipment. I think that pretty much discounts the letter that was included with the packet here, so I feel very comfortable. We can disregard that and be in favor, I feel be in favor of it.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I move that we forward to the town board a recommendation of approval of the conditional use grant, following the conditions as stated by staff.
Second. Moved by Commissioner Tallon, seconded by Commissioner Dennison, that would forward a recommendation of approval of the conditional use grant to the town board, subject to the conditions that were identified by staff. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed will vote no. Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the next item is a request for a commercial corridor plan waiver and reduce site offset, Tarmigan Business Park, PUD subdivision, lot seven. Paul, you have the floor.
Thank you. This site is located in the Tarmigan Business Park, PUD subdivision, lot seven. It is owned general commercial and is also subject to the commercial corridor plan, as well as a intergovernmental agreement with Fort Collins regarding the corridor activity center. Under the recently amended requirements for the qualified commercial and industrial site plans, this project would typically be included as a communication item to you. However, there are two aspects that require planning commission approval, one being a waiver from the commercial corridor plan, and second being a lesser site offset. The overall development characteristics include a lot area of approximately 20,000 square feet. The lot is being created through a concurrent minor subdivision, is being split off from a approximately 49,000-square-foot lot. Approximately 36% of the site is landscaped, and I do want to point out, as you look at these drawings, north is to the right, so 392 would be on the left side of this drawing. There is a 624-square-foot building proposed with a single drive-through, outdoor seating, and pedestrian order window, and 14 parking stalls. The building includes predominant materials of a stone veneer and a stucco-like The building includes predominant materials of a stone veneer and a stucco-like finish known as exterior insulation finish systems, or EFIS. Metal siding and accents are used as secondary materials, building height up to twenty-two feet at the tallest point. The waiver requested for the commercial corridor plan is from section, um, section two B two, and the applicant is requesting a waiver from the amount of stucco or EFIS allowed on any one building facade. The proposed north and south building facades would both exceed the amount of EFIS allowed, which is thirty-five percent. The north facade is proposed with approximately forty-one percent, and the south facade was, with approximately seventy, uh, one percent. The commercial corridor plan states that requests for design criteria must meet, um, are subject to determination by planning commission and are subject to three criteria. The strict application of applicable standards will result in either extraordinary practical difficulties or undue hardship. The proposed waiver variance, if approved, will protect the public interest equally or better than the standard for which the waiver is requested. An approval of the waiver request will not be detrimental to public interest. Based on the justification provided by the applicant and included in the packet materials, staff believes the proposed waiver is consistent with the intent of the commercial corridor plan. And just to back up, to show you the elevations that are under consideration, the north elevation is, kind of these wings over the drive-through are proposed as the EFIS material, approximately forty percent of the facade. South elevation facing three ninety-two, the kind of center element of the building, as well as the, uh, canopy for the drive-through as well. Also requested is an approval of a lesser offset. The municipal code states a twenty-foot offsets required unless a lesser offset is approved by planning commission to no less than ten feet. The proposed offset is twelve point seven five feet, and to show you that on the site plan, the seven eleven is located towards the top of this drawing. The drive-through would be twelve feet nine inches from the property line with the, um, actual building itself setback closer to approximately twenty-eight feet. The rear of the seven eleven and the car wash drive-through, um, are the uses facing the reduced offset and are separated by a landscaped area. The lesser offset approval would not alter the essential character of the surrounding neighborhood. The building proposed is designed to complement other buildings in Tarmigan Business Park. The lesser offset would not cause a fire or building code issue. Ample distance is provided for both landscaping and drainage, and there do not appear to be any other necessary reasons, um, for the full twenty-foot offset. Staff also researched the typical offsets of other communities in the area and found ten-foot setbacks, if not less, are fairly common. So based upon the justification provided by the applicant and the staff review, staff believes the proposed lesser offset is consistent with the spirit of the municipal code and therefore recommends approval of the lesser offset. In accordance with section two B two of the commercial corridor plan, staff recommends approval of the waiver from section three B three A five of the commercial corridor plan to allow forty-one point two percent EFIS on the north building elevation and seventy point nine EFIS on the south building elevation as proposed on the findings in this report. And in accordance with section sixteen nineteen thirty of the municipal code, staff recommends approval of the lesser offset to the extent proposed in the submitted site plan based on the findings in this report. So there, you will likely want to make two separate motions, uh, to approve these items. The applicant is present if there are any questions, and that's all I have.
Paul? Does the applicant have any additional information they want to present?
No, sir.
Okay. Comments, questions from the commission?
Mr. Chair, a couple of questions. On the, the setback issue, Paul, is it just the drive-through structure for, that's gonna be less than the twenty feet?
Correct, it's just the drive-through, the, the overhang and the, the support post sort.
Okay. And then on the, the building materials, can you back up to the three criteria that have to be met and just kind of, particularly the first one? If you could talk to that, or maybe the applicant needs to speak to, to how that criteria's being met?
Yeah, I would suggest hearing from the applicant, but I would add that, uh, in staff's examination of it, it is a very small, um, building and a very small building, um, that facade, the north and south elevations, um, mixing in a lot of different materials, um, probably degrades the look of the building, um, and that's a primary justification in, in our opinion, but, um, as the town attorney likes to say, it's the applicant's burden to, to prove their case, so if, if you want to hear from them, we can do that as well.
My name's Chad August, I'm with MAH Architectural Group, I was the project architect for it. Uh, as Paul noted, the primary justification that we had for the, um, material allowance, particularly on the south elevation on the front, was as he noted, uh, either putting too many materials on the building is going to make it look busy and not make it look right, obviously. Uh, the, the other option was to radically increase the amount of stone that was on it to try to get the EFIS percentage down. Given the small size of the building, to have that much stone would just have a monolithic heavy feel to the building that wasn't either appealing or consistent with, uh, the design of the Zicky's project.
Does that answer your question, Doug?
I have a question. What is EFIS?
Uh, it, the, it's a simulated stucco, so it's what you see all over the place.
All the stuff you think is stucco?
Yeah.
Is it stucco? Comments, questions, or commission?
Mr. Chair, I need to make two motions here, I guess we'll go on the first motion here. Uh, I'd like to recommend approval of the waiver, the section three.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt, I believe you have a public hearing, I think you need to close the public hearing, I'm mistaken.
Nope, we're, we're good. We don't have public hearing on this.
Don't mess with me.
He was, he was.
I was in the moment. You're on salary, so just stay here. But anyway, uh, on our first motion, I would like to recommend approval of the waiver for section, uh, three, uh, point B, point three, A five of the commercial corridor plan, uh, for the northern building elevations.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Commissioner Talon, seconded by Commissioner Dennison, that we recommend approval of the waiver request of the conditional corridor plan to allow for the forty-one point two percent EFIS on north elevation, seventy point nine on the south elevation as proposed, that from staff. Did I catch them all?
Yeah.
Okay, close.
Close them. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed will vote no. And motion carries unanimously.
Back to you, Mr. Talon.
Oh, I'm back. Okay, uh, Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that, uh, uh, we recommend approval of, of the lef- lesser offset, section sixteen nineteen thirty, to extend the proposed in the, uh, submitted plan, twelve point seven five feet from the west side of the property based on the findings in the report.
Second.
And moved by Commissioner Talon, seconded by Commissioner Dennison, that we approve the lesser offset as proposed by staff. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed will vote no. And the motion carries unanimously. So both of them are good to go. We will now close our regular meeting, open up a public hearing for an amendment to a planned unit development for a sign criteria plan, Rain Dance subdivision. Carlin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. This request is for an amendment to a PUD overlay, uh, planned unit development for some design standards associated with that PUD overlay. These pertain to a comprehensive sign package. The PUD is set up to allow for some flexibility that would not otherwise be allowed under the standard zoning regulations, and it offers the ability for the applicant to propose creative design solutions that either meet the intent of the code or, um, create a better outcome than the ca- than the code would allow. This process is developed to provide flexibility, to encourage design innovation, and provide some creative community development. This is the overall, uh, Rain Dance site. It extends from Crossroad Boulevard to the Pooter River Corridor, east of County Road thirteen, and west of County Road fifteen alignment. The site is zoned RMU and, uh, general commercial with the PUD overlay. That PUD overlay was approved in December of two thousand and fifteen at an, it included a number of design guidelines, different street standards, and, um, and the like. However, um, at that time, the, it was preliminary in nature and, um, sign design criteria wasn't anticipated at that time, so this is merely an amendment to add those design criteria for signs, um, to this PUD overlay. Uh, the applicant is proposing a number of, um, different types of signage in this package. In- included are identif- identity features as seen here, these are illustrative in nature, and sign permits will still be required for all signs requiring permits, those being, as you see here, as well as monument signage and, um, and other, um, home builder signage as well. Um, this here shows the primary and secondary monument signs. Again, um, these will all require sign permits, and these design criteria does not, um, affect, um, other code requirements, life safety, such as, um, placement in public right-of-way, site visibility triangles, all those, uh, criteria in the code will, will remain. And the applicant has proposed the following materials, and again, these are, um, not set in concrete, but these are guidelines to help maintain a cohesive sign package throughout the entire development, and also serve as a guide towards the different, um, home builders and, uh, commercial, uh, folks that will be developing within Rain Dance. This proposal is consistent with chapter five B growth framework, with the goal of maintaining character of the community. Because this is part of a PUD overlay, the notification followed the zoning notification requirements, and properties within three hundred feet of the subject property were notified as shown here. Staff is recommending that the planning commission forward to the town board a recommendation of approval of the PUD amendment. Uh, staff requests that the following be entered into the record, the application supplemental materials, staff memo, supporting documents, all testimony during the public hearing, and recommendation. Uh, I'd also like to note that the applicant does have a presentation that they would like to share.
Okay. We're going to take that now. Which is yours, which one's yours?
That's the overall.
Yeah, which one's yours?
Those are mine.
That's mine.
It's a different project.
No.
That one's mine.
Okay.
You want that?
Yeah.
Okay, so go to this view here. There you go.
Good evening, Tom Siegel, sixteen twenty-five Pelican Lakes, uh, point. Uh, just a couple of clarifications, uh, that, on the presentation that, uh, Carlin made. Um, the information that you see here is, uh, relates to signage that is permanent. I just want to say, in addition to that, there are additional sign program that relates to signage that would be temporary. For instance, the sign that I'm pointing to on the lower right-hand corner is, uh, is a location, uh, sign, we show, we have, uh, the, we have our aquatic center, et cetera, et cetera. Um, we also have in addition to this sign, would we, which would have the individual builder names on that particular sign, uh, showing them where models might be and things like that. The point being, and, would, point being is that instead of each builder having their own sign on the site, we put them all in one place, they all look the same, they all got the same color, they're all built the same way. So there's other things behind this program than that was, uh, just presented here in this presentation. Um, the second thing I would wanted to talk about was, um, uh, this, these design elements. Uh, the, the ones on the bottom, we're really looking at that as, um, are, is nothing that we're proposing right now, we just want to, uh, uh, bring up the point that potentially something like that could be presented in the future for consistency for the community. The one thing that we are, uh, considering, uh, and will apply for an application for is the, uh, community identity feature, which will, it's hard to see here, but it has the name of Rain Dance here. Uh, we think that is a great, um, sign, uh, indicator when people want to live here that this will be Rain Dance, gives them a community identification. This particular building is two hundred and fifty feet from any roadway, so it's, it's, we're, we're not trying to sell real estate off that sign, we just want people to know that this is Rain Dance and, and this is, this is your home place. As, uh, Carlin also mentioned, you know, I think we have the ability, is that we have consistency, we're able to do some things graphically that maybe the builders wouldn't do individually, um, a- and that's the main reason for putting this particular program together. Thank you.
Since this is the public hearing portion of the process also, is there anyone in the audience who has any comments, questions pertaining to this agenda item?
We'll close the public hearing.
Want to hold up on that for a moment, Victor, and ask for any questions from the commission on this.
Chair?
Carlin? What is the amendment, is it basically adding this, or is this changing something?
It's just adding to design criteria that's already in place.
Any other questions from the commission? Okay, I have a motion on the floor to close the public hearing.
Second.
And moved by Commissioner Talon, seconded by Commissioner Foreman, that would close the public hearing. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed will vote no. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed to vote no. Motion carries unanimously. We'll reconvene our regular meeting, go to the next agenda item, which is a recommendation to the town board for the amendment to a planned unit development for sign criteria that we just discussed. Any comments from the commission on this?
Mr. Chair, I move forward to the town board a recommendation of approval of PUD, amendment as stated by staff. Second.
And moved by Commissioner Talon, seconded by Commissioner Dennison, that we forward to the town board a recommendation of approval for the PUD amendment that we just discussed. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed to vote no. And motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the next item, a recommendation to the town board for an amendment to a master plan of Winshire Park subdivision. Carlin.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This application is for an amended master plan. It is not associated with an annexation. However, the original master plan was affiliated with an annexation, and this would be the third amendment to that master plan. This proposal is to amend what is known as parcel E. Just backing up a little bit, the process for amended master plan is shown here, typically with an annexation of property, and as to the master plan, a large piece of property to have a cohesive development. This site is located north of Jacobi Road, west of County Road fifteen or Fifteenth Street. It's also located just north of the Windsor Meadow Apartments and the rest of Winshire Development here, a single-family. Last year, the site went through a master plan amendment for additional, or changing the number of allowable multifamily units, and that was changed to fifty-seven townhome units. That also included a master subdivision, or I'm sorry, a major subdivision and a site plan that were approved with that. There has not been any activity on that, and hence, this application is before you to make a third amendment to that master plan. And what that would do is, as shown here, parcel three E, which is eight point five acres, would be changed from multifamily units of fifty-eight to senior housing for ninety units. That being said, the number of units for the site dictated by the square capacity and our engineering director, Dennis Wagner, has reviewed this proposal and found that the senior units would be equivalent to sixty-four multifamily units. This is the land use breakdown from the existing plan, which shows fifty-eight units approved in the RMU residential mixed-use zone district. Overall, six hundred and seventy-one units for the entire Winshire Park neighborhood. And the change would result in seven hundred and forty-five units for the overall neighborhood, and this parcel, you know, being changed to the number of units shown here. Part of that rationale is that the senior units do not have the same number of people that would be anticipated in a large townhome, essentially a single-family attached unit. This proposal is consistent with Chapter five B growth framework, maintaining the character of the community while accommodating future growth that is fiscally responsible and environmentally responsible, and prioritize growth in areas currently served by town infrastructure and services, as well as Chapter five C residential areas framework plan, supporting a diverse housing and residential neighborhoods to meet the needs of varying family size, lifestyles, and income levels. This also is consistent with the strategic plan, primarily safe, well-planned community with spirit and pride. I'd also like to note that while a neighborhood meeting is not required with this step of the process, the applicant did hold a neighborhood meeting prior to submitting an application, and sent out notice to the entire Winshire neighborhood to get feedback on their proposal. They had at least twelve residents attend, and the comments were very positive. I also attended that meeting to witness the meeting and gather comments as well. The applicant does have a brief presentation they'd like to share about that neighborhood meeting and the input they received. Staff is recommending that the planning commission forward to the town board a recommendation of approval of the amended master plan.
Okay, thanks, Carlin. We'll take the applicant's presentation now.
One second. I do need to enter into the record the application supplemental materials, memos, supporting documents, testimony during the public meeting, and the recommendation.
When you pause too long, I just keep thinking.
Included in there the applicant's presentation, please.
Thank you, Mr. Commissioner and Planning Commission members. My name is Jim Doyle with TB Group, and we actually worked on the last project that was proposed for this property. And as Carlin said, since then, we've been working with the Windsor Housing Authority for the senior housing development to plan a senior housing development campus for this piece of property. So I'm going to ask Carlin to help with the presentation here. Thank you. And one thing, since this is a master plan amendment, we weren't required to do a presentation on the site plan, but we wanted to make the board feel comfortable with what we're planning on coming back to you with in a couple of weeks. We're planning on submitting our major subdivision and also a site plan submittal, qualified commercial site plan submittal, which doesn't require board approval, but we wanted to make you feel comfortable with what we are proposing. To start out, as Carlin said, we're located off of Fifteenth, County Road fifteen, sorry, and just north of Winshire Drive here, and then Guardian Drive here. And that's where we're located, and we're really close to Mr. Twister's balloon entertainment over here in the Winshire neighborhood. So that, just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, I didn't know where he was at.
So that's another benefit there that we have. The architect put together the slides, so I apologize for that. So this is just the current site plan, what we're proposing to do. We have one- and two-story buildings, and we're accessing off of Winshire Drive and Guardian Drive up to the north here. And on the previous plan, we were, our entrance was here, so what we've done since then, we've moved the access point further west, which I think will be better, providing access to County Road fifteen, just from a traffic standpoint. And then, we're also accessing off of Winshire Drive down here. That is pretty much in the same location where we had it previously. And we're proposing one-story units next to the residences in Winshire, which are located along the west side here. We have approximately thirty-three units that will wrap around the perimeter to the west here. There are six-unit complexes or townhomes, or, sorry, cottages, and each one of those will have little courtyards in there that the residents can enjoy, and we'll have a lot of landscaping, more open space with this new plan that we're showing you. And then we have three units down here. And then, the other thing is, we have ninety units for a two-story building complex up here, so we have together ninety units here and thirty-three here for a total of one hundred and twenty-three units. And then we'll also have other amenities planned for the residences of the senior housing development that we will have built in for them for community amenities and things like As I mentioned, we'll have ninety-six one-bedroom units, twenty-seven two-bedroom units, and then one hundred and ninety parking stalls. And I just wanted to show you what the previous plan looked like. As before, we had fifty-seven units, so we're all two-story, and with that, we would have had a lot more people living there, besides the lower use that we're planning here. One thing we did at the neighborhood meeting, we listened to the comments from the neighborhood on what they wanted to see, and one of the things was, they weren't happy before with the two-stories being so close to their development. Some of these units were twelve feet in some spots, and then twenty feet at the furthest point down here. So with our plan, we're proposing twenty to thirty feet away from there, and we're making all our units one-story, so we will not have any two-story units along that west end. Many of the residents that came to the meeting in Winshire were planning on complaining about that, or not, you know, they weren't going to, they weren't happy about it, but after the meeting, a lot of them said, how can we support you? We want to get a grassroots effort to try to support this project, and they are really in favor of doing that. So I think we've tried to listen to them and their concerns and address them. And some of the other items that I think are more beneficial to this new plan are that we have less traffic due to senior living, so we'll have less traffic trips, since a lot of the residents, some may not even have a vehicle or one vehicle, if that, you know. A lot of them will depend on other forms of transportation, or bus service or something. We have more green space, less light intrusion, so the lighting from the last development that was proposed for here would have a lot more adverse effect from lighting, and this one will provide less. We have less noise due to the senior demographic. And then also, the closest two-story building, which are the, let me go back to that, are these units here, they're over two hundred feet away now from the fence of the west side of the Winshire subdivision here. So we've tried to really pay important design, keep our design intent to meet what the neighbors were asking us, and also to meet the code. And then, just to give you a little look at some of the cottages, we're proposing, the one-story cottages are one- and two-bedroom units, with the parking setback from the residences also. If you go back to that plan, you can see all the parking will be along this edge here, rather than in driveways that would be much closer to the, more of an impact to you, so... Sorry for the flipping back and forth. Also on the one-story cottages, this view here, this perspective view, kind of gives you an idea of what some of those interior areas would look like. Plan on having some landscape amenities, kind of at the nodes where walks meet, just for gathering places for the seniors, and places where they can have a bench or something like that out there. And then, here's another view, same thing with the one-story cottages. For the two-story building, we're planning one- and two-bedroom units, an abundant of green space with zero-scape plantings and low-water plantings and things like that that will be also beneficial to the environment with low-water usage, as well as being attractive. Some more views of the two-story building. As you can see, there's a port cachere here at the entrance to the main lobby to the senior housing unit there. So it's a very attractive, what we think is a very attractive housing development. We're really excited about it, and we hope you are too. So if you have any questions, I'll answer your questions.
Comments, questions from the commission? Yeah, I was going to say, I think you have a nice change of plan here. Really like what you're doing here. Jerry, you have a question?
How do you define senior housing?
That's us, Jerry.
I'm not that far off. I believe it's fifty-five and over. Fifty-five and over.
Any other questions, comments?
No. Mr. Chair, I move forward to the town board approval of the master plan. Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Talon, seconded by Commissioner Dennison, that we forward to the town board a recommendation of approval of the PUD amendment. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed to vote no. And the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Good night.
Moving on to the next agenda item, which is a recommendation to the town board for revised design criteria and construction specifications. Say that three times. Paul, you have the floor.
Thank you. The Division One of the town's design criteria and construction specifications, which I'll simply refer to as specifications henceforth, include construction and design standards for all streets within the town. The current specifications were adopted in two thousand and nine by resolution. They were also amended in two thousand and fourteen. The resolution approving the standards authorized the Director of Engineering to make minor amendments or modifications, but required any major amendments or modifications to first be approved by town board resolution. Town staff has prepared a number of major amendments for consideration. There are four primary goals with these proposed amendments. Number one is implementing the Complete Streets Guide adopted by town board last year. Number two is enhancing the community image through things like landscape meetings and improved streetscape. Number three, allow for greater flexibility for innovative or alternative designs, things that we saw in the Rain Dance development. And number four, achieving greater consistency with neighboring jurisdictions. The full text of the proposed modifications are attached. A summary of the major changes is included in the packet materials. There are two tables proposed to be adopted, one for urban roadways and one for the rural roadways, with the general parameters for design, includes number of lanes, anticipated traffic, width of the roadway, width of the lanes, things of that nature, design speed and the posted speed limits. The major modifications are summarized as follows: making sidewalks mandatory on all streets. Currently, rural road sections do not require sidewalks, looking to change that. Increasing the width of sidewalks required, from four feet to five feet on local streets and five to six feet on arterial streets, to increase pedestrian safety and comfort, where you can fit two people on a sidewalk. The developers will have an option to use a detached sidewalk, such as the one shown here in Water Valley on residential streets. Currently, there are attached sidewalks. These are a little more pedestrian-friendly and aesthetic as you get the green space and the trees up by the road. Detached sidewalks would then be required on the minor collector streets. An example is Water Valley Parkway in Windsor, of one such street that was built with the detached sidewalk. Bike lanes would be required on minor collectors. Garden Drive is a minor collector, example of the type of streets that currently would not be required. not be required to have bike lanes. We believe that's kind of an oversight where traffic volumes are enough to warrant the bike lanes. The inclusion of a landscape median on gateway corridors to enhance the community image is proposed. Curb extensions, these are areas where there's on-street parking. You eliminate the parking kind of around the corner, get pedestrians closer to the corner where they're more visible to drivers, also reduce the distance they have to cross the street. Also proposed is a range of speed limits for each street type. Currently, there, there's less of a range provided. Having a range allows the speed to be tailored to the context of each individual street. For example, a major arterial in-town in Windsor is Main Street or 392. It's obviously a C-dot roadway, but it's an example of one that it's got a 30 mile an hour speed limit due to the schools and just amount of pedestrian traffic. But then, if you get out, get out of town towards the west, it goes up, I believe, to 55, so a range is often appropriate for those roadways. And finally, loop lanes would be added, and these are something that were, are being built in Rain Dance. They allow for access off of arterial, minor arterial roadways, excuse me, collector roadways that wouldn't typically allow driveway access due to the number of trips on the street. It's not considered safe to have vehicles backing into the right-of-way, so by providing this little loop lane, you just have two points of access. Cars can get turned around and exit more safely. So, those are the major changes proposed. Should those be approved, staff anticipates administratively making additional minor modifications to update relevant sections. The modifications can be viewed as development-friendly, as they will allow greater flexibility based on lower design speeds proposed. An example of this is a reduced centerline radius, which is possible with the lower design speeds, and it requires less land to accommodate the curve of a roadway, so you can do more with less land. There was a work session in June of last year providing overview to town board of these topics. Staff has since met with stakeholders earlier this summer to get further input, and with that, staff recommends planning commission forward a recommendation of approval of the resolution amending the specifications as presented. That's all I have.
Paul? Any questions from the commission?
The one thing I really like about this is the loop lanes. Loveland's got them in there. It's great for getting you off the main street. It clears up that whole, that whole area for traffic. It's a good addition.
It'd be a great, great safety thing, too, because kids can play on the street and back away from the traffic.
Right, absolutely.
Aren't you supposed to have parks for that?
Yeah.
Scott, you have a question?
Yeah, I would just add to that as well. The image that Paul's got up there right now is similar to what you see on the new covered bridge parkway in Rain Dance, and it's going to enhance the streetscape so much, not having privacy fences backing up to the street. Instead, you have the houses fronting the street, so it's really an aesthetic improvement as well.
Any other questions, comments? If not, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to forward to the town board a recommendation of approval of the resolution amending the design criteria and construction specifications as stated by staff.
Second.
And moved by Commissioner Talon, second by Commissioner Forman, that we forward a recommendation of approval to the town board of the resolution amending this design criteria that we just discussed. Those in favor of the motion will vote yes, those opposed will vote no. And motion carries unanimously. Communication from the planning commission. Travis, you have any?
Nope.
Nothing? Jerry?
Nothing.
No communications.
Doug?
Nothing.
Communication from our town board liaison. David?
Nothing to communicate, Mr. Chair.
Okay. Communication from staff. Carlin?
Scott will probably mention this, too, but we have a work session item next week on Monday regarding landscape chapter.
Paul, do you have anything? Glad to be here. Michelle, do you have anything? I missed you in the pair. Scott, do you have any?
No. Yeah, Carlin's correct. The next code update item will be at the town board work session Monday night, the landscape code. And then, also Cindy's email earlier letting us know her schedule for future meetings reminded me that we should probably tentatively plan to cancel the October 3 planned and commission meeting, just given that we've got four commissioners going to the APA conference. However, that's just tentative, you know, if we do have something that's urgent business that we need to schedule, we may have enough planning commissioners still here if we need to do that, so. But tentatively, October 3, we would cancel that meeting.
Okay.
That's all I have.
Amanda, you have any?
Who to adjourn?
We are adjourned.
Who made the motion?